I now call the board of the February 18th, 2019 meeting of the New Caney Independent School District. Current time is 6:30. Let them in and show that the board is present with all members in attendance. Mr. Warwick and Mr. Trautling have to. Please rise for the invitation to be given by Ms. Wendy Sharp. And remain standing while I place allegiance and honor the Texas slide with the left of Ms. Harris.
My gracious mother, thank you so much for the opportunity to gather here tonight to do the business of this school district. Lord Jesus, I just ask for wisdom as we consider the things that are ahead of us tonight. Would I just thank you for the opportunity to start this sermon? I wanted to ask your blessings on the district and I thank you for what it has meant to me and my family and my children and the opportunities that they've had because of the education they've received. Lord Jesus, I just ask you to bless this session tonight and I just ask you to be honored by what we say and do. Your name be great.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the freedom of which we stand, one nation, united in the law. In the base of the Constitution, justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to these rights. One state, one liberty, one individual.
Item number two on the agenda is our recognition. Mr. Caesar, you're up first. Looking very nice as equals.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Thank you for allowing our keeper crossing staff to be recognized. They're all well deserved to be here tonight. The first person we'd like to recognize is our teacher on campus and that's Mr. Joey Boils. Ms. Boils is our department chair for math. She is always looking for ways to bring cheer to our campus during staff luncheons that she plans every quarter. She planned all of our lessons for our math students during our level up time in the mornings. She is always challenging her students in class and building relationships with each of them. Our peer professional we'd like to recognize is Ms. Sharon Trinidad. Ms. Trinidad is always there to help students and teachers when they need assistance. She goes above and beyond the expectations that are set for her and is always willing to help whenever needed. Her job comes with many responsibilities that she conquers them effectively and efficiently. Thank you, Ms. Trinidad. Our student athlete is Mr. Dylan Dempsey. Dylan is an eighth grader. Dylan started the year wanting to only play basketball but was convinced to play football by his teammates and friends and became one of our go-to players. He was also a top player on our basketball team, helping lead the team to third place in our district with a 13-3 record. He's a good student in the classroom, making all A's and Bs. Dylan exemplifies what it means to be an Eagle. Our female student athlete is Ms. Joanna Alpharens. Joanna is also an eighth grader and she was a contributing member to the volleyball and basketball team. She will also be a driving force for our track team. Joanna is one of those athletes you want to just carry home with you. Furthermore, she is a student you wish you had more just like. She chooses the right attitude each and every day. She gives her teammates and her coaches 110% every day. She is a top player, a person that makes people around her better. She is truly what a Lady Eagle should be. Our CTE student is Mr. JT Howard. JT has been a member of our New Caney Junior FFA since he was in elementary. He has been a junior officer several times and is one of the livestock judging team. He shows manes, goats, and pigs. He is very dedicated and never gives up. He lives at the FFA and is proud to share the organization with everyone. He is a model member of our organization. Our fine art student is Ms. Emma LeBlanc. Emma has continuously risen to any challenge that has thrown her way. She is an amazing representative of the Keeper Crossing Band Program and we couldn't be more proud to have her as our band president for this school year. Not only is Emma an outstanding physician, but she is also a kind, determined, brilliant, and strong young woman. She embodies what it means to be a well-rounded individual and is sure to accomplish any goal she sets her mind to. Our custodian is Ms. Nancy Cardenas. Ms. Cardenas is part of our custodial team. She is a very hard worker and always looking for ways to keep our building looking clean for our staff and students. She shows up to work every morning with a smile on her face and is always there for the fall upon. She is a big part of our KCMS family. Our child nutrition person we'd like to recognize, Ms. Kim Deason. Ms. Deason is on time for work and very rarely misses a day. She comes in every morning with a positive attitude and a smile on her face. She is always willing to work in any capacity asked and is willing to do to go to work at another campus if needed. She praises the students for their good manners and good behavior in line and goes the extra step to learn and call the students by name. She works with minimal supervision and does her work correctly with a smile. She deserves to be rewarded for outstanding job performance and attitude. Thank you again, our KCMS staff members.
Up next, Ms. Bridget Hyden from Woodbridge Forest Middle School.
Good afternoon and thank you for this opportunity tonight to recognize a group of students and faculty from Woodbridge Forest Middle School. It's my pleasure to present these candidates for recognition to celebrate their individual accomplishments and their commitment to learning and creating environments that are conducive to learning. They all stand before you because their drive, dedication, commitment to always do something just a little bit better. These students and staff before you demonstrate strong judgment, decisiveness, character service, and leadership in their respective departments that they represent. First, I'd like to recognize our fine art student Sadira Box. Sadira is a gifted musician at Woodbridge. As a sixth grader, she learned to play two instruments as a member of the band and orchestra. She is currently still a member of the symponic band, jazz band, and in the orchestra. She plays the bass in the orchestra. She's first chair, but soon, has earned all region band two years in a row. Sadira plans to attend college to study music. We wish you the best as you continue pursuing your love for music, Sadira. Next is Tate Duncan representing our K and career in technical education. In addition to playing in the band, Tate also stands out as a leader in his career in technology courses. Tate has been recognized by his teachers for his outstanding academic achievement but also for his outstanding attitude and consideration to others. Currently Tate is working on earning his private pilot license. He plans to take his first solo flight when he turns 16. It is evident that Tate is a self-starter and has a passion for flying. Tate, I know your first solo will go just as planned and we wish you the best as you earn your wings to fly. Our student athlete is Joshua Evans Pickens. Joshua is a model student athlete and excels academically. He is an example of a great teammate and has a strong work ethic. He has earned the respect of his coaching staff and his teammates. Joshua participates in football, basketball, several relay teams, and participates in the shot and discus with the track team. Joshua plans to attend college after high school and continue his football career playing in college. Josh, keep up the good work and it's the little things that set you apart. We're glad you're a student at Woodbridge. Our peer professional that we want to recognize tonight is Lucretia Locke. She is the instructional support peer for our English language learners. Specifically, she supports about 200 students that spends most of her days working with 15 students that speak four different languages. She commits herself each day to teaching these students to become independent and productive members of our community. Her passion is apparent as she interacts and works individually with these students. Ms. Locke, thank you so much for your commitment to support all of our students at Woodbridge. Irene Garcia is our custodial staff member. As a custodian at Woodbridge, she takes great pride in her work and always steps in to help. There is no job too big or too small. Her contributions and efforts always go above and beyond are recognized. She always has a positive attitude and a willingness to serve. I hear her say all the time, "Ms. Hyden, let me get that, let me get that." Ms. Irene, you are the reason why Woodbridge Forest Middle School is great. Thank you for making sure that the classrooms and the school environment meets the highest standards for cleanliness for our students and staff. I want to make sure, did I miss, Ms. Gloria? Gloria Guerrero is our child nutrition staff member. She again takes care of providing for our children's nutritional needs so our teachers can feed their minds. Ms. Guerrero strives to reach each student and her service to our students shows as she greets and works with all of our students. Of course, we appreciate Ms. Guerrero also. Last is our teacher, Mary Darish. Ms. Darish sets the tone for learning as her students enter the door of their eighth grade math class. Each student is greeted with a huge smile and an iPad. Students are completing simple calculations as they enter her classroom. She sets the tone for learning. It's also been nice to see the kids' confidence grow with just a small task where they were hesitant, they were slow, or maybe not sure. Now they are definitely, they're in that door and they've got it. Ms. Darish is willing to help members of her team and the department. She has a gift for helping students how their decisions can impede their progress through careful conversations. Ms. Darish is an outstanding teacher who understands the critical needs for her students to succeed academically and behaviorally. She is a superior teacher and I'm thankful that the students of New Caney ISD and Woodbridge have the privilege of having Ms. Darish as their math teacher.
Okay, finally is Mr. Jack Dumasnell. He's with our Learning Center. Mr. Jack, come on up.
Good evening, board members. Mr. Franklin, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to recognize some of the outstanding staff members at the Learning Center. First person I'd like to recognize is Antonio Westbury. Antonio is one of our custodians that we represent as responsible for retaining the Learning Center, the special education building, and the child nutrition building. She's done an excellent job keeping our campus clean, ordered, proper, and satisfied. Next staff member I'd like to recognize is Ms. Maria McCoy. Ms. Maria McCoy is our child nutrition staff member and makes the trip from the New Caney Elementary twice a day to the Learning Center regardless of weather conditions to provide her students two meals a day. She does a wonderful job. She always has a smile on her face and does it in a very timely manner. We appreciate her work. Third staff member I'd like to recognize is Ms. Angela Almgier. Ms. Almgier is the principal secretary at the Learning Center. She assumed the role mid-year last year and has done a fantastic job since she assumed the job. Ms. Almgier wears a min hat. She is also the receptionist, the bookkeeper, and is responsible for discipline and data entry. She greets every student and parent with a big smile and a positive attitude and fosters a welcoming front office environment. And last but not least, our final staff member I'd like to recognize is Ms. Jamie Shelley. Ms. Shelley is our middle school science teacher. She does a fantastic job keeping the students current in their individual coursework. She strives to make personal connections with the students and make their class relevant to the students. Ms. Shelley frequently goes above and beyond her duties as a classroom teacher. Shelley is constantly offering to assist others. She is volunteer to assist staff in student check-in and dismissal procedures where she greets students with a smile in the morning and says goodbye to them in the afternoon with that same smile.
At this time, we will have a presentation from the Harris County Department of Education presented by Ms. Lennard. Where are you?
Yes, my name is Gaylor Rollinson-Mayer and I'm with Harris County Department of Education. I work in the grants development office, the Center for Grants Development. The reason why I'm here though is to honor the special partnership we have with New Caney ISD, HED. And as you know, HED exists to support public education in Harris County. Our services and initiatives within the 25 districts in Harris County. You may not know though that in 2017, 2018, HED was involved with New Caney ISD through six out of our 15 divisions. And that's including our business services office, our Center for Grants Development, Center for Safe and Secure Schools, Base for Kids, Director School Programming, School-Based Therapy Services, and our Teaching and Learning Center. Last year, we provided professional development through our Teaching and Learning Center to 100 new teachers and educators. Our after-school programs positively impacted 19 students from New Caney ISD. One student received services through our occupational and physical therapy services. We also try to provide some other services like our School Finance Council through our Business Services Office and training there. For my office, the Center for Grants Development, we do monthly listing of funding research and provide that to your district so that we can all be aware of what kind of funding and grant opportunities are out there for us. We're proud of our continued collaboration and how together we can positively impact our higher schools, students, staff, and local community. I have a couple of small critiques for you to commemorate our continued collaboration and partnerships. I'm gonna hold up my bill. I'm hoping that y'all have a place to display these, this heavy screen. It says, "Presented to New Caney ISD in recognition of supporting student achievement and staff excellence" from 2018 to 2019. Now I also have from our Center for Safe and Secure Schools, I have a a certificate, a certificate that actually we want to thank Paul Betchel for his participation with our Center for Safe and Secure Schools. This actually reads, "Certificate of Appreciation Awarded to New Caney Independent School District for being a member of the Center for Safe and Secure Schools, participation in the Center Operations Board, and every amazing safe and secure learning environment in our partnership between 2018 and 2019." So these are for you, so to you, Dylan, to you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item number three on the agenda is IBI report from Mr. Brad. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Franklin. My name is Brad Hughes. I'm with IBI Architects, Marple Lee, UTE Architects. We're fortunate tonight, Andy Brewster is back as head of our office. He was able to join us tonight. But I'm here to present the design update for two of the middle schools, the Woodbridge Forest Middle School Edition as well as the Keeper Crossing Middle School Replacement Projects. What we would like to do is thank the board for selecting us to be a participant in your expansion as well as Superintendent Franklin, Superintendent Matt Cowperd, and all the administration. We have listed here several of the key players from the administration habit. We couldn't do anything without Bridget's input, Kristy, Brent, Mark, Ben Rice, Michelle, Richard, and Theresa. Also, also for the Keeper Crossing one, the same players, but we had the principal at Keeper Crossing Caesar as well as Debbie Nieden, Warren, Pat, Sarah, Christina, and Brooke. All these people contributed to getting us to where we're at right now. I think what you're gonna have is very good projects coming out. I want to highlight the Woodbridge Forest Edition. We have been tasked to increase the student population to 1,500 student capacity. That's going from 1,100 students to 1,500. What that entails is 13 new student-centered classrooms and that's what I'm gonna keep on that. It's a new look that we're going after. It's gonna be following the lines of what was done at Brookwood Forest Elementary School, opening more class. And what we're also doing is two new science labs are being added to the thing. An art lab, teacher workroom, and lounges are gonna be put on both floors to help with the current teacher's lounge. It's pretty small, so we're gonna allow a little bit more room and spread the teachers out. Also, a key factor in this new student-centered classrooms is having collaborative spaces outside the classrooms. This would be for teachers that have students that could go warrant probably they could go outside the classroom, still be monitored through the glass. And they had some instructional areas in that, working with the technology. We're going to expand the boys and girls locker rooms to accommodate the new student population as well as up over in all the existing classroom corridors. Right now it's drywall, painted drywall, that's a lot of maintenance problems. We're putting a wall protector throughout those corridors to protect the walls. Also, we are mandated by COE to update the firearm system throughout the entire campus as well as expand the parking facilities. It's a very tight site, but we're gonna maximize what we can get out of parking spaces for that. And also expand the football bleachers as much as we can on that. Our construction schedule is tonight, I believe, you should be presented the bid proposal to be approved or recommended approval. And it will be complete by May of 2020. So that an estimated $5.3 million cost is what that addition is. At the Keeper Crossing replacement, again, we're gonna use the modeling of the Woodbridge Forest, but expand it. We've learned some things and we're gonna build on that. Again, all the classrooms now are gonna be student-centered, learn-focused. It's gonna be a lot more interactive for the students. We're gonna expand the classroom areas for the CT programs. That program is going to be expanding in the future. Also, we modified the spaces in the fine art and the art labs because that system's gonna expand again with all the students. And the fun thing about it is, again, incorporate And the fun thing about it is, again, incorporating collaborative spaces throughout. In this opportunity we have, not only in the classroom wings, but also outside opportunities for collaborative spaces. We're also going to be using the latest district technologies that's going to enhance the student learning, as well as expand the parking beyond the office of Woodbridge to allow for larger after-school hour gatherings. The construction schedule for that, we are right now beginning construction documents. And we plan to go to the Board for the proposal bid acceptance on September of this year, 2019, with a substantial completion of May 2021. That will have all the students ready for August of 2021 to be ready to go. That estimated cost, given the subwriting on budget, is $40 million. If there's any questions, I can take it in.
Sir, thank you so much. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Item number four on the agenda is open forum. We have, nobody signed up for that. Item number five, the attendance closed meeting. The Board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071, for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072, for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the Board reconvenes an open meeting. The current time is at 7:01. Board ended its closed meeting at 8:00. Up next is item number six, which is reports and proposals by Board members. Mr. Mixon has prepared us something for this evening.
Finance Committee, Randy and I have served on that February dip. I'm looking at the 2018, 2019 budget. First, I want to say to the people that work finance, granted, I know Randy's not here, but I know it's a very challenging position, especially for education, but budgeting is extremely difficult. I want to say thank you for all the hard work that you guys do. We're looking at, you know, increased student, you know, student count, PDA, 15,000, I think, 15,700 or something. So, we're definitely looking at continued growth. 2014, you know, our general budget was funded. One of our biggest, I think, challenges is with the legislature and the state discussing how they're going to fund education. But in 2014, the state was 69% compared to this year, 61%. And it's always a challenge during the legislative sessions and how the state chooses to continue to fund us. I know there are some opportunities coming up that a few of us are going to Austin to people representatives, as well as to, you know, encourage improvements in our state funding and education, that they get it right. It's been a challenge for quite some time. But during our, you know, Finance Committee meeting, we established our budget priorities. I know since I've been on the Board, the priorities have been consistent. One is that we want to continue to create and promote retention rates for our employees. One of the presentations that we had during our Finance Committee meeting was an incentive survey that was conducted among almost just over 2,000, I think, employees. This went out to 1,631 responded, so it was a good response rate. Overwhelmingly, the responses continuing pay raise. It was incentive chosen by the employees. As far as we want to continue those, we hope to continue those. So, that was our number one priority that we established during committee meeting. Number two is to maintain our class, you know, class size, keep our class sizes down, especially the 4th to 4th grades. And then number three, on a balanced budget. And looking this year, right now, it appears in the beginning of the budget process, it's very challenging to kind of see a crystal ball off many working wheels and things that are happening. But it appears we'll be within budget for this year and probably will be able to reach all three of our priorities and other four. So, thank you.
Item number seven on the attended superintendent's report. Mr. Stripling.
On behalf of over 70-plus teachers and staff members, I would like to say thank you for all that you do for us in the CTE department. This is CTE month, month of February. You have some cards and some pens in front of you that our CTE staff and students, the students at New Caney Middle School and our class that turns pens, Mr. Willa Fonte, and supplies to make those pens for you guys and will pass those along. So, if y'all see him out, you can tell them thank you. Does a real good job there. In your board packet, there's a three-page CTE report. We're not only going to be going over the first page. The second, third page pretty much kind of drives some of the things that are on the first page. And the things that are on the second, third page are coming down the road far from CTE. Most of them coming on board later this spring and in the summer for CTE. So, they are making some changes at the state level for CTE and also at the national level with our programs, five grant that we get. This past summer, we hired Brooke Lyles as our CTE coordinator, and she's been a tremendous asset to our department. She's been working on several items with us, curriculum and instruction enhancement, AAF and EBMAs, data analysis, and some student certification additions and reporting, among many other things that I have to do. I'd like to spend most of the time talking about the middle school and the high school, what we're doing there to help us to be ready for the new things that State CTE is doing. We are, we have a lot of drive in doing that. The alignment of the middle schools, sophomore middle schools into a more common sequence of courses and more common offerings of courses has been driving us. And we've gone from three courses to five courses that are middle schools that are being offered, starting in 2020 school year. So, in August, we'll have five CTE courses that our students can take there. Those things are great, and we need those because the main goal there is to help our middle school students to be ready to be able to make a four-year plan for their high school years. So, we're hitting a wide range of all 15 career clusters that are in the high schools and helping those students to understand what's available for them, certifications that are out there for them, and to be able to get in those job lines that are there in our high schools. So, that's what our goal is for the middle schools. We're going to coordinate those to help them to be hands-on, but also at the same time, primarily learning what the careers are in those schools and getting them college and career and voluntary rating. At our high schools, the main focus that we've been trying to do at the high schools here in the last eight months is to really get ready for what's coming down the road later this spring and summer. TDA has been really, they've been really forecasting some things that is going to happen based on the federal level, so we're working on getting those things ready at the high school. Aligning our career clusters across the border between the two high schools and getting ready for the third comprehensive. And also just increasing our accountability with AAF, with the certifications that are out there, the new certification list that has been out of public comment over the last month, and try to get those ready for all of our kids to be able to get ready to take those and using our funds to be able to prepare them for that. So, those are our mid-year things that CTE has going on. I'll hit you again in June with some numbers on how we did this past year. Any questions?
Thank you. Item number eight on the agenda is a consideration, a consent calendar consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of finance report, consideration of purchasing reporting, consideration personnel reports. Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
Second.
Motion has been moved to second. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is approved. Item number nine on the agenda is a consideration to award the construction contract for Woodbridge Forest Middle School Edition renovation for Mr. Brucel Construction, presented by Mr. Matt.
Yes, sir. Earlier tonight, y'all heard the presentation from Mr. Hughes with IBI as far as the Woodbridge expansion. This is the first project out of bond 2018, and our original estimate of this project was about $9.1 million, so we're coming in close to $4 million under what we originally thought such a great start for this bond program. We had eight people respond. We feel that Brucel would give us the best service and give us the product we need and have it open by that meeting.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the construction contract for Woodbridge Forest Middle School in addition renovation, Project 044-2018 to Brucel Construction? Motion has been moved to second. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item number 10 on the agenda is consideration to award the construction contract for Porter High School Fire Alarm System Upgrade, Project 006A-215 to Wilson Fire Equipment, bond 2015. Mr. Matt.
Yes, sir. This is a project that Fire Marshall has acquired us to do as a result of the expansion of Porter High School. We received two proposals for this. Original estimate for this project was probably around half a million, so we have a good saving for that, and we can use it in some other places, so passing for your approval tonight for Porter High School.
Are there any other questions or further discussion?
Was this below as we've received? Remind those.
We received two bids, and yes, ma'am, it was a lower than two.
Is there a motion to approve the construction contract for Porter High School Fire Alarm System Upgrade, Project 006A-2015 to Wilson Fire Equipment?
Second.
Motion has been moved to second. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item number 11 on the agenda is consideration of the approval for CPR 29 in the amount of $548,687.87 to furnish and install the emergency responder antenna system as required in order to satisfy the IFC 510.
Yes, sir. This is a continuation of our bond 2015 project. Essentially, this is another Fire Marshall requirement, whether it is, it makes it aware if there's an emergency in the building, Fire Control providers can communicate throughout the building. You know, there's unblocked walls, and you're testing to make sure your signal is good throughout the building. Attending our five elementaries that are having projects on them now, Valerian, Shorers, Crippen, Ben's Ranch, and Oakley. Again, since we're touching those campaigns for renovations, we have to go back and do the subrate for the fire code, so it's touching fire camps, it's bringing up code communications.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the CPR 29 in the amount of $548,687.87 to furnish and install the emergency responder antenna system as required in order to satisfy IFC 510, Elementary School Innovations, Project 502-2015? Motion has been moved to second. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Motion is approved. Item number 12 on the agenda is a consideration of approval CPR AG 04 in the amount of $97,000 to replace the existing fire alarm systems, which is not functioning and comply with the voice, or to replace the existing devices. Mr. Cowan.
Yes, sir. This is for our, you know, for touching that facility, done some work over there, so we have to comply with Fire Marshall codes. And so, that involves adding the voice system to that facility and replacing some of those devices that aren't functioning so well anymore. So, they're going to get that working force over there as well as upgrading.
Are there any questions or further discussion?
Was this a similar situation with just two people responding to our?
This is actually a change order, and so you just go down through your different contractors, so, you know, that's handled through them, and that'll just handle the process.
Is there a motion to approve the CPR AG 04 in the amount of $97,000 to replace the existing fire alarm system, which is not functioning, and the compliance of the voice evacuation to replace the existing device, 2015 renovation of the Agricultural Science Center? Motion has been moved to second. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved. There being no further discussion, the meeting is adjourned at 8:15.